Yep, please sit down.
We already slowed it slightly to be able to do it again, right?
Correct.
Um, the presentation is off, right?
Let me, I'll make a comment about that presentation. She was, after talking with them, for they weren't able to make it tonight, so we're gonna do that at graduation. Who's to award that?
What, um...
(coughs)
Question, Ralph?
No, I was just, I was looking at that agenda item and I'm reading it and I'm thinking it and I'm realizing it that you just addressed that.
Yeah. Consent agenda. And they want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
Right after presentation is agenda item number three.
Oh, my, actually, that's right. Public comment. Um, yes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about this a little bit. At the last meeting, we had some discussion that I saw on, on the video and this is, I'm gonna pass this around to everyone.
Yeah, you want me to hand this out to anybody else?
Yeah.
Is this a different one than?
Yes, the E D H. It's actually the E D H.
This is actually, this is actually the current one, if everybody wants to take a minute to take a look at this.
So we're all looking at this one, right?
We're all looking at B E D H.
Okay.
Marie. Probably no one read it.
Oops.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
So I, so I asked Jerry, and I don't know why, didn't get off, to make one comment by the policy for this particular meeting.
It didn't get off because it, the discussion happened after the agenda went up.
So that's where this came from. This was done, but they, was this the last one revised?
August 2013.
I can speak now.
Go ahead, I'd like to...
So, yeah, what happened was, the policy B E D H was updated August 21st, 2013. For whatever reason, the, this policy never was transferred from being approved into the policy book in 2013. So when this, the last board meeting occurred, this was included with the board packet and what was, it was taken from the board, the policy manual. It's updated online, but again, at some point in 2013, this never went from the creation and approval into the policy manual in the S A U. And I can't, that's not something I can explain.
So, this B E D, B E D H policy that you're giving to us now, I mean, I recall those dates and everything. What is so different about this than what was presented to us at the last meeting? Is there a copy of that at the last meeting?
Do you want me to read it?
From the last meeting?
You have it?
I have it right here.
That's, that's the one from the last meeting?
No, this is the 15 minutes, this is the current one.
Okay.
I'm asking about what's the difference between what we discussed at the last meeting and this particular policy?
I think reading it, I think everybody would probably like to know what, better watching it on, to hear what it says, so. This is a public participation at board meetings. It was revised August 21st, 2013. The chair was Steve Brown. Bonnie Seer, Ralph Fogg, Robert Dulett, and Norma Joy were the rest of the board. The primary purpose, and this is the policy that was created, the primary purpose of the school board meeting is to conduct the business of the board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. The board encourages residents to attend board meetings so that they may become acquainted with the operation and programs of the schools, school. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and public. However, the board reserves the right to meet and adjourn or recess a meeting at any time. The board also reserves the right to enter non-public session at any time in accordance with the provisions of RSA 9183. In order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the board may be heard and at the same time, it may conduct its meetings properly and efficiently, the board adopts as policy the following procedures and rules pertaining to the public participation at board meetings. One, 15 minutes will be set aside for citizens to address the board. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Speakers will be allotted three minutes per person. Number two, members of the public may offer comments on agenda items only. The board will not entertain comments on items that do not appear on the agenda. Requests to address the board on matters not on the agenda must be presented to the superintendent and must set forth the specifics of the subject to be addressed. When appropriate, the board may place such requests on the agenda. Consistent with RSA 9183, policy B E D B, and the laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights, the board will not place any matter on the public agenda that it, that is to be properly discussed in a non-public session. Complaints regarding individual employees, personnel, or students will be directed to the superintendent in accord with policies K E and K E B. Number four, all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow this rule of order. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, questions may be directed to individual board members, but answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board. And again, this was a policy set by Chair Steve Brown, Bonnie Seer, Ralph Fogg, Robert Dulett, and Norma Joy, August of 2013.
Ralph?
Do you have a copy of the same policy that you brought to the meeting at the last time? This is the one we had the last time?
Which is incorrect.
This is over here, let me see that. I think this is what he's looking for, he's got his name on it.
Got my name on it?
Uh-huh. It was, it was sitting over here.
What?
I think all of us...
Yeah, we all had one. I was here, this was here.
So, any questions on this?
I'm just, oh, wait a minute.
I'm waiting.
I'm sorry. I don't see B E D H in this thing that I was just handed, so until I find it, I might have to grab Sandy's again here.
Again, we...
So, at the last meeting, we were discussing what was presented. So just for clarification, so that we understand where we're at now with the most recently updated...
Aye.
I'm curious about the differences and, and I'm, of course, I'm curious about the direction the board would like to take this policy. This is the second time it's been on our agenda, well, it's not on tonight's agenda, but it is the second time that we've talked about this policy two consecutive meetings in a row. And I, placing it on the agenda at the last meeting really should have opened up discussion on it, so. What about this current policy that's been revised by the board in August of 2013? Does this current board propose to change? I mean, isn't this an opportune time? That's kind of what I was trying to get to at the last meeting. What are we hoping to change?
Well, I brought this board because of the last meeting and this is the current policy and I want to follow policy.
Yeah.
And it's open for discussion if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I myself, I know that when it was either the first meeting we had or the second meeting we had, we discussed agenda items and we discussed where the location of non-public session was and the idea of remaining a board that had two opportunities with public comment, you know, and it was unanimous or consensus that we'd allowed two spots on the agenda for that. And then it, then it was, at the last meeting, it seemed as though that, that discussion that we had with the unanimous consensus, not really, it didn't seem like it was a vote of the board that we kept two public comments, but it seemed like it was consensus. What was, what was irritating to me, quite obviously, was the idea that we talk about it, we discuss it, and we have a consensus and we move forward, but then we back up. So maybe at the end of this discussion, we'll all know, are we going to apply this policy, which it seems to say a total, I mean, it really should say...
You're talking the new, the one I just handed out?
The one that's been approved or revised.
Yeah.
And I don't know the difference between revised and reaffirmed. I mean, I do know the difference, I don't know why it says, one says revised, some of it says reaffirmed. So now we're either gonna reaffirm this policy, and I, I guess I would make a motion to reaffirm the policy here tonight, or do we want to table the issue and have the policy committee suggest any, any changes to it and stuff like that? I mean, so here we have, I hear in the background, we have two issues. Are we gonna allow just 15 minutes of public comment? Is it gonna be one spot? Is it gonna be two spots like we've discussed? Or, I mean, I can see here that does say speakers will be allotted three minutes. I've already taken up that time. I'm, I'm hoping that at some point, we know where the direction would take. I thought we had taken a direction or some consensus in a, in a certain direction at one of our first meetings together as a new board.
Go ahead, Tracy.
I understood that the only reason that the policy was brought was to make sure we follow it. That was the only reason we brought it tonight was to follow policy that's been written.
Anybody else? Again, the policy, city, sorry.
Yeah, well, since there seems to be some discussion, I think I would like to see the policy committee look at it, compare the one in 2012 with the, which we had used first, and this one, and bring back suggestions to us.
Okay, so that 12 is the one I was just looking at from the prior meeting of tonight?
Yes. And that's why this one was revised, because they changed what the wording in 2013.
No, I, so I recall this time, period of time.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that either. Going back to policy, we had to...
I don't believe that the board's intent with this revised policy was to restrict public comment. It says 15 minutes, I, it doesn't say a total, it doesn't say, you know, in two different areas, it doesn't say in one, one only area.
It says that you, the board can vote to extend that in the B E D H one, line one?
Yeah.
And I think that the purpose is to keep it from becoming a show of emotion or, you know, or calling names or getting worked up. You know, the idea is to come to the board with a point about something that's on the agenda, say your piece nicely, and sit down and listen. And I think that's what that intention is. And if, I would love to see lots and lots and lots of people from the town to come and for each of them to get their three minutes, and I would vote again and again to make it longer so that everybody could have their say, but I don't want to listen to one person hurl insults at us on a regular basis. I think that we need to keep to the rules. I think we need to say, if they're going to speak, they speak about what's on the agenda, it's three minutes unless there's a real purpose behind extending it.
Tracy?
And I really would like to reiterate that this policy was written by Steve Brown, Bonnie Seer, Ralph Fogg, Rob Dulett, and Norma Joy. This is your intent. I like the policy, and it gives us the, over here, by majority vote, if we wish to extend it, the board absolutely may.
I think it's good to go.
Yeah, I do too. I agree.
So I heard a, a question about bringing this to the policy committee, so...
Well, it sounds like we don't need to do that.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm policy B E D H as it was revised on the 21st of August 2013.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, I'm not opposed. I just, a little bit more discussion, I mean, and I'll vote in the affirmative, but I would like just, now we're taking, now we're taking today's business and we're looking at the agenda. And we're seeing, again, and I appreciate this, I'm not trying to change this agenda, we're seeing two parts for public comment. So just for clarification, in my mind, as we look at this new reaffirmed policy, are we talking about 15 minutes will be set aside total? Are we talking about 15 minutes being set aside for just one opportunity for public comment? Or are we talking about an aggregate between two opportunities for public comment? As I pointed out at the beginning of this new school board sitting together, quite often, I mean, I see here it says agenda items only. As I stated at that, one of those early meetings, often we'll hear comments that help us along and they can be constructive. Not always, but that doesn't mean that there's never constructive comments from the public not regarding agenda items. So I guess the question to the board and for, I'm seeking clarification, do we continue with two opportunities for the public to speak? Do we limit an aggregate of 15 minutes?
I'm at, my personal opinion, if, if it's necessary, I don't have an issue with that myself, but that's just my opinion, Jen.
Number two says, "Requests to address the board on matters not on the agenda must be presented to the superintendent and must set forth the specifics of the subject to be addressed. When appropriate, the board may place such requests on the agenda."
It's pretty clear.
So it would be better that we do have the members of the public coming in and speaking on something that they've been thinking about and that they put some time into not just coming in to, you know, winging it. So they have that option, so we have, we have one section for public comment on the agenda, and if someone wants to talk about anything else, they get it in in time and it gets approved or not.
Okay. So here comes the crafty little guy saying, "But on the agenda, you have an opportunity for new business to be spoken about."
We need to rewrite the agenda, clearly.
Or old business, "I'm here under old business and I want to talk about what happened at the last meeting." So, I mean, again, I'm not trying to quash public comment at all. I'm trying to enhance the experience for everybody in town, including us board members. It doesn't, just remember, we wanted to be here. So if somebody's gonna hurl a crap bomb at us, we knew the job was dangerous when we took it.
I didn't, I did not know that would happen. I had no idea.
Just a procedural matter on two, where it says, "When appropriate, the board may place such requests on the agenda." That means that would have to come up at some point during the meeting to make a decision if the board wants to hear something, because it can't be done in an email asking you to make a decision on that, clearly.
Right.
So the words "may" in there say you may do it or you may not do it. So procedurally, if we go forward, I mean, right now, that's if we reaffirm this policy. Well, until we change the policy, that's what it says.
Right.
How would you like to move forward on that procedure?
Should we edit that and write, it says it's going to the superintendent, maybe the superintendent or the chairman? How about the chairman? Replace board with chairman.
We can't edit anything without second readings, presentation, first reading, second reading.
I think clearly we want to hear public comment and we've had a lot of it, actually, and over the year, we, last few years, last year, we had quite a bit and it was very successful, but I do think the board needs to retain control of the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any more comments? I guess not, I hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Lovis, you got that? Thank you.
So just a reminder, we will have to determine that procedural process for "may."
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Well...
Until that time, can we stick to the agenda? Given two public comments?
No.
No, I think we should follow policy.
We usually get hit for not following policy.
Well, but, so we, we should decide what part of the agenda we want public comments on.
Well, I did ask Jerry, the agenda was already, to add it to the bottom if we wanted to do it that way, but that's just, was my opinion of that. I don't know what you guys would like...
You already asked for public opinion, public comments.
You did.
Already asked and, asked and completed, and we moved on to the consent agenda.
I never heard you ask for public comment.
I didn't either, but...
You did, you asked Bob to redo it. You specifically...
But then, I did, and then Bob started talking about public comment.
Yeah, he's right.
Huh? Yeah. Yep. So do we want to...
Let's start over.
I mean, I would certainly allow the...
Well, until the end, I will.
I would, if it's an agenda item, Beth, I would think that you...
No, I'm, I'm, I hear you, Ralph. Let's do public comment.
Okay, when...
I'm gonna start the...
On the agenda is policy B E A. So may I ask a question on that now, or would you prefer after you've discussed it? I'll do it either way.
So, yeah, now I'll write it down.
Okay. On page two of the E A, number four, I want you to get there.
All right.
Okay, the very last sentence. It says, "Visitors will ordinarily be heard immediately after the meeting is called to order." My question, and it kind of goes to the previous discussion that you just had, was usually the first per, public comment is just on the agenda, and the second one has been an open, in case anybody had any about current, past, future.
Take it for advisement.
When will we know if the board is gonna continue to have a second?
Well, we're reading the, the policy B E D H, and basically it says if you have something that's not on the agenda, you can put it in writing to be on another agenda.
When will you find out what agenda it's going to be on so that you remember your question, if it was a month ago?
It's a, it's a good question.
Sorry, but you've got to discuss it to decide if it's, so it's a reasonable length of time.
Yeah, I hear, I hear. I hear you, yep. We're gonna have, we're gonna have to talk about that. Anybody else?
So what are we doing now, Bob? We just doing one, or we doing two at this present time?
We're gonna do the two.
Is it just on agenda item, both on just agenda item?
My policy is just agenda items this time, Steve.
So both will be on agenda items?
Yep, and if you have something other than that, you know, put it in writing, easier.
That being said, so I know where we're going, basically, the lack of public comment is, is come from this board. I guess I'm glad I kind of missed it at last, at the last meeting, but I was told by numerous people that it was offered for the police to be called. Just because someone has public comment where the truth might be a little distasteful does not give the board the legal right to call the police and have someone removed from a public meeting, just as in the information that the New York School Board Association gave is allow the public to attend. You cannot call the police and have them removed from a meeting.
I, I do hear you, Steve.
And I just, it's, that last meeting was an absolute service, and it was all brought on, and a lot of the times, and I'm surprised I'm not even getting, I mean, you be, the, there's three, there's three members of this board that someone says something and they're raising their hand before someone even gets a chance to, "You don't want public comment? How about you don't want public money? You don't want to hear from the public? How about if the public just shut down the money supply? Gotta be fair, wouldn't it? It's, you gotta, well, if you don't want public comment, then don't expect our money." It's, this is, this board is, it's...
Steve, do you have anything else on the agenda?
Um, not at the moment.
All right. Anybody else?
I have a non-agenda comment.
Okay.
You guys shared some lessons learned that the school leadership had gone to regarding a shooter in another school. I gained a lot of information from that. I appreciated you sharing that with the public, and I was able to bring that to my workplace, and I didn't, you know, state where I got it. I'm not giving anybody any credit or blame for anything, but I wanted to say thanks for passing on those lessons learned to the, the public at large.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Or a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion? Anything? Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Meeting minutes?
I'm making a motion to accept the public meeting minutes of May 20th, 2019, with any amendments offered.
Ralph, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Aye.
That's all those, Ralph, I'm sorry, right?
It was just that one set of...
Goals workshop minutes, though? With May 14th, anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the goals workshop minutes of May 14th.
Ralph, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna say, can I have a discussion?
Oh, sorry, great, discussion.
I thought that was a wonderful meeting. We really got a lot of progress done and thank you.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Opposed? Okay.
I wasn't there.
Lovis, you're getting all that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Committee meeting minutes?
Just information.
Any motion on that?
All right.
Superintendent reported in.
Reports. Superintendent, report?
I'm happy to report that I was finally able to make contact with Jill Levin from B-Rate Solutions. Wasn't easy, but I brought Kristen LeVie, we made a road trip to Cape Elizabeth, Maine, and knocked on her door to find out where her money was.
Awesome.
Within a few days, the money was in our account. So we, they put into our account that $32,730 and 26 cents. So, you know, it was, it was a team effort, you know, the whole, you know, the whole business office and myself, but just happened to finally get that taken care of. As you can see here, the Educator Information System, which is basically our, our system for managing teacher information with the Department of Education. When we moved over from S A U 64, there were a lot of discrepancies and mistakes. While we only have one social worker here who works in our district, the DOE had us listed about having, oh, seven social workers. They, they really had, had a challenging time managing the information that we sent over from 64 and transcribing that to what it meant to us, have it, you know, at the start of S A U 101. Larissa contacted Bill Ross and she and Kathleen Bordeaux met with Mr. Ross and the DOE and really helped us kind of make, make sense of where the errors were. And so I'm happy to report that we've addressed these discrepancies and we've looked at how we're gonna rectify that within the building so that information doesn't get mixed up in the future. We've got a, a one meeting with the entire S A U staff and the administration from Paul School so that we can make sure that we come up with some level of procedure to avoid any further issues. I'm confident that won't happen again. As we discussed at our joint board meeting with Spalding, I had an opportunity to swing down to start the day at Spalding last week, and it was, one really, one, it was multifaceted, it was already planned to go down there, but then I was invited to go down to attend the top 10 breakfast at Spalding because we had one of our graduates who was top 10, Anthony LaBruto, who went down there, and also one of the other students who had left Paul School in seventh grade was one of our top 10 students, now Ben Mathias. So we had a couple of Paul School kids who'd, who'd done really, really well at Spalding. Now it's just, I think it's a, a high point for our district to say that, you know, 20% of the top 10 came out of Paul School, which was great. Also had the opportunity to interview a couple of students from Wakefield for the Cal Seaman Scholarship, and we have to put there, they'll be receiving the letters here this week that indicates that we, they will both be splitting that, that scholarship, but they both, you know, made great statements about why they, why they expect they're gonna do well, and we agreed that they both were very deserving of that. So that will be Anthony LaBruto and Sam Owen, who, Sam did not go to Paul School, but Anthony is, I just did. So again, it was a great opportunity to get down there, talk with Mr. Ross. as I just did. So again, it's a great opportunity to get down there, talk with Mr. Roy, talk with some teachers, speak with some other administrators about what's going on for our students, and, you know, for that effort of continuing to keep that relationship wide open. And as you knew, we have finally started having our committee meetings, so we got the chance to do policy meeting, capital improvement, curriculum assessment. We had another policy meeting last night. Those minutes have been attached, and we'll continue all of that schedule for the remainder of this school year. A new schedule will be coming out in July to indicate when those other meetings will be. And I find it much stronger and easier for us to continue having these meetings if we are doing that on a scheduled basis that's laid out for the entire school year. Any questions?
Ralph.
Top E-rate thing?
Yes.
Do you consider that $32,000 unanticipated funds? How does that come into the operating budget?
Marie?
Since we've been reporting monthly to the board on anticipation of where we were going to, the status of where we were going to be, up through April, April's report, we were reducing the deficit appropriation by $30,000. After the failed connection with the provider that was, that we were getting this money from, Jerry felt that we should inform the board that we may not be receiving that money, so it was, it wasn't reducing the deficit. On your May report, that $30,000 did not reduce the deficit. Now that we did receive the money, that will be applied to the line to help in a deficit appropriation. We are still on deficit appropriation, but by $30,000 less than what the May report stated at that point.
And I, you know, it was before I was in the position, but the money was also allocated out of the bottom line budget, so the money came out of the budget, and the money's going back into that budget.
Unanticipated, right?
Any questions?
It's not unanticipated.
Right, Marie, we anticipated.
We anticipated getting that money because in order to be part of the E-rate grant, you have to spend the money first, and then with approval, you get the money back. So we spent the money first, and then we were anticipating we'll get the money back. So now it was applied to the line that was originally spent.
Thank you.
That's me, sir.
Students' Service Report, Anne's not here tonight, but I believe there's a report.
There is not a report, and I believe you received an email from Anne regarding why she would not be here.
Yep.
Yep.
Any old business? New business? Policy readings?
I think Jerry was gonna do that.
So you all got a packet of policies? So, and as I read the policy on policy approval, it's rather vague in that new policies, doesn't even say it, policies need to be, have a first and a second reading for, and how I interpret that is, for new policies and policies that have been revised. Policies, so anything that's been a change or something that's new, if it's been reaffirmed, my interpretation of that is there does not need to be a first and a second reading, that we can just choose to reaffirm that policy here tonight.
Okay.
So the first policy we're talking about is BEA, as it was already brought up. The only change on that was when we made the decision, if you go to page two, that the BEA meeting, it says in the first line at the top of the page at the end, they will start at 6:00 PM. That was 5:00 PM. That's the only change that was made.
Why do we have this in BEDH?
Excuse me?
Why do we have, I'm sorry, reading.
I'm not sure what you're...
Isn't BEA...
Is regular board meetings.
Okay, all right, so it's not just when you're speaking.
And then BEH is public comment, correct. Although, as it was pointed out, public comment, there is a piece of that that says visitors will ordinarily be heard. But again, awful language in there, I think, is ordinarily, and so we need to look at, we want to keep that language in there, but certainly maybe something we have to come back to.
So this one just needs to be reaffirmed?
This has to be revised.
Revised because of the change of the time.
Yep. So this would be considered the first reading because we did make a change to that. So...
So any board members who feel as though there might be another revision or any other change should take the opportunity between now and the second reading to offer those changes?
Or you could make an offer right now, Mr. Fogg, if you wanted, if you want to change, again, the line, the last, in that section for visitors will ordinarily be heard immediately after the meeting is called to order. If you want to change that, you could. Or you could even change in there when you have a public comment. You guys can make any kind of revisions you want.
Anybody have a comment on that part of it?
I do, because if you just look at it quickly, it's, there are big similarities between that one and BEDH, but there are discrepancies as well, and I think we should make sure that they tie out because, like we mentioned on BEDH, it said that the, wherever it was, that anything that wasn't already, if you wanted to have public comment that wasn't on the agenda, right, items not recorded on the agenda, maybe added at the discretion of superintendent or board chairman is on BEA. So we want to make sure, right, I mean, we want to make them the same.
May I make a suggestion, then, that we want to bring this back to the committee, and we can look at that and align, and we can align the two so that there aren't those discrepancies?
And we could add the comment about a timeframe for the person requesting to be on the agenda, which agenda they're going to be on, or just a way to inform the request.
So that will go back to the policy?
So we'll bring this back to the policy committee, if that's the will of the board.
Can I be okay with that?
Yes.
It does state somewhere along here that any items that are from people in the school district, meaning anybody in town, still has to submit their request for what their agenda item would be before that Thursday, before the meeting, right? Is it, yes, number three. So the public is allowed to speak to things that are not on the typical agenda, that want to bring something to the agenda, just has to be submitted to the superintendent for chair review prior to...
Thursday.
Prior to noon time on Thursday before the next meeting. That should be clear for everybody to understand.
Correct. All right, Jerry?
Yep.
Do you want this one?
Yes, sir. So we, there were some slight changes made to admission of homeless students regarding legal references. So we want to just, again, this was not a whole lot of changes, but again, it was more, some of our, some of your policies are changed regarding RSA or N rule, or, again, something that's been, maybe a federal law, in this case, it could be McKinney-Vento Act, because that's a law that covers homelessness. And, you know, just while we're on the topic of homelessness very quickly, the question came up about, do we have students who live in the town, who attend school in the town of Wakefield who may not be residents? And as I've said before, there are some circumstances where students who may live outside of the boundaries of Wakefield, of the villages of Wakefield, that are attending school here. Some of those might be legal requirements, they may end up being homelessness, they may end up being custodial rights of different, of parents who is split time 50-50, or it's laid out in the divorce decree where the child will go to school based on their, who has custody. So there are some circumstances. There are no circumstances that I'm aware of that a student who doesn't qualify to go to school in Wakefield is attending school in Wakefield. Not that I'm aware of. And I look into, as a principal, I looked into a lot of them.
So, if, raise your hand. So if the public wants to know a number of that, can we give them that of how many we have?
I would have to have that discussion with somebody more familiar with...
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no, I can have that discussion. I intend to, because the question just came up today, is, I mean, it's a 91A comment. I intend to have that discussion with the right people tomorrow, or by the end of the week. At this point, I'm not comfortable saying how many students who are homeless are in Wakefield.
Could we also include Spalding?
Tuition students.
Tuition students that live, that question included.
Oh, yeah, it would include Spalding. Anybody who's going to school, you know, under the auspice of being in Wakefield.
Ralph?
Having the experience in the past of being aware of situations, and then being brought into the same situation again recently since I've been elected, I find it important that we're all communicating the same story. I mean, how do we, as school board members, separate ourselves from concerns, you know, when family members are laying a truthful scenario on the table, and it counters what a parent or family member may be presenting to the administration? It's got to be, it's, for me, it's a burden to bear, knowing that I'm hearing one story and seeing a different story, and feeling as though it's a simple, I mean, there's got to be an easier way than for me to torment over, you know, one person's story and...
When it, when it comes to contention, what it's brought to me is, you know, if someone asks me the question, I have to look into it, and I have to give them a decision that may be in opposition to what they're contending. Typically, that ends up being a homeless issue, typically. So if, I think maybe it would be helpful for the board to have maybe Anne and Ms. Wilson come in and talk about the McKinney-Vento law, because we are restricted on some things that we can even ask. So that becomes challenging. And I say typically, because there have been times when I've questioned whether somebody's been a resident, and I've camped outside of their house in the morning before school, trying to find out if they're walking out of that house in another town, and I can't prove it. So then I'm in a position where I could say, "You're not coming to school," but I could also put us in a legal predicament, and trying to avoid that, but not through lack of effort. It's maybe the opposition of what I know, what I can prove.
You always want to be able to prove what you present.
Yes, sir. So, but I think it might be helpful if we have at some point, Ms. Keppler and Ms. Wilson come in and talk a little more specifically about what the requirements are of McKinney-Vento, and how we may come to those decisions, and the length of time on the McKinney-Vento, because that seems to change with the person at the Department of Education who oversees McKinney-Vento for the state.
I mean, I just don't, I, when you start thinking about willingly and knowingly, and the repercussions from being a governing body willingly and knowingly looking the other way, I'm not willingly and knowingly looking the other way. I want the right answers. I want the right outcome.
In the past, this board has brought to me over the last seven years numerous issues that I've looked into. Some of them I found that the person did not belong here in the town, they were going to youth school. Other times, I found there were circumstances. I think you need to put the trust in the administration that they will look into it, as I have always done.
Yep. That's all we can do.
Because we do it. I mean, like I said, I'm camping out in front of houses, trying to find a place to hide behind a snowbank, so I don't look like I'm hanging out creeping on them.
You don't have an ALI hat?
I don't. So anyway, I'd be looking for this JFABD. This should just be a reaffirmation. So I'll be looking for a motion to reaffirm this.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to reaffirm the policy JFABD.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, post.
Okay. JICFA, hazing. And this reflects changes in RSA 631,7. I have a copy for people if you want to take a look at this, if you care to take a look at that. And basically, that is what we're talking about here. And it all now reflects the recent, the most recent changes in the RSA. And that would require a vote to revise, or at least, excuse me, that would not require a vote, because this will be the first reading.
This will be the first reading. Anybody want to make a motion?
You don't want to make a motion at all?
This is first reading.
You do not need to make a motion, it's the first reading.
She's asking, who should read it?
Well, if we don't, we don't. I mean, I'll read it all.
That's...
You don't have to, we can read the second, if we need to.
Well, I mean, I guess the discussion we'd want to have is, as we review it here tonight, is there anything that anybody feels necessary to add to it before the second reading?
No, I like that it's been updated to the New Hampshire School Board. I like that it's been verified with the School Board Association, and it's updated and current.
Pretty comprehensive. If you, again, if you take a look at it, we come back, Mr. Fogg, for the second reading, we can certainly hold off on a revision after the second reading if you want to take a look at it, add some more, take something away.
I would say move it forward towards the next, the second reading.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
No. So you want to make, you want to make a motion to revise?
No motion.
No motion, okay.
All right.
Correct. Policy KB. And again, this, this is, so if you recall, when we were having our policy meetings that stopped last September, this policy was slated to come before the board for a first reading. And so when we first, when I first got a look at it, it still had Tony's name at the bottom, Tony Moon's name at the bottom, but it was not revised at that time.
Point of order. Which one are we on?
KB.
KB, which is...
But at that point, it was revised when it was meant to come to the board back in September. So again, we would have, this would be considered the first reading.
And the changes are the community engagement title.
Yeah, you had, the title was changed.
What did we just change, Tracy?
Actually, that was...
That was it?
There needs to be an "and" instead of a comma. Isn't there in the first, in the first paragraph, like the last full sentence between community and other?
If you say so.
Don't you think?
Sure.
There needs to be an "and."
Yeah, you take the community, school, comma, community, and of the family members. So...
Parents, school, and...
We can...
This would be a comma.
Make changes on that.
All right.
But again, this is a revision, so we're going to bring this back for a second reading anyway.
Make it while we were there.
Sure, no, we can make it, so...
So this is also first reading?
That's also first reading, as is IHAK, Character and Citizenship Education. Now, the changes in this, and what you have included in your, this policy here, is the old policy that was last reaffirmed in 2014. So what's been changed here is if you look at on the new policy, bullet, bullet items six through 17 have been, have remained. Bullets one through five have been added, and there's been a change at the bottom on the last little paragraph, teaching in the area of character and citizenship, we focus on the principles and fundamentals as United States expressed in the founding doctrine, the United States will take place throughout the K-12 program. That's been changed to merely say, teaching the area of character and citizenship will take place throughout the K-12 program. So...
So Article 83 is the education article of the state constitution, second part of the constitution, right? Isn't that correct, fair?
Sir, what's, oh, Article 83, number one? Yeah.
This is also a first reading?
This is also a first reading.
All right.
And so we will bring them back at the next board meeting.
Summer meeting schedule?
You just brought to me, do you want, it's very simple, do you want to have the regular board meeting scheduled throughout July and August, or you want to move to have only one meeting? one meeting in July and August? One meeting in July, one meeting in August?
Each board has made so many different decisions on this over the years.
And the question came up again, so we'll throw it out there.
Last year, we needed all of them.
I'm in favor of one per month.
I'm in favor of one per month.
Are meetings continued?
Our, our committee meetings should continue. Especially, yeah, we really do, you know, again, I think the only way to keep it on the front burner is to keep them on the front burner. Our policy is so far behind, we are years behind.
I think if, as long as we can keep our committee meetings going, I think I'm okay with it.
I feel we should keep the schedule, you know, keep that we have the first Tuesday
and the third, third Tuesday if we, if needed, but keep it there just so that we need it, we, we have that available to us.
So, then if you Tuesday, if the first Tuesday, you make, you'll make the decision at the end of the meeting, do we need to have another meeting on the third Tuesday?
I, we, we still have a mess. So, I don't understand, like, if I was at my job and I had a mess, I wouldn't be looking to cut my hours in half. I think that we still have a whole lot of things that need to be accomplished. I think that we all signed up for this for twice a month, and I think we need to not take the summer off, because it's not, we're not the kids, we don't get the summer off. We need to make the school better for the kids by working and getting this fixed, and we certainly have plenty of stuff ahead of us that needs to be handled.
We can clearly have both meetings.
Kind of hours and half is slacking, in my view.
So, what's the consensus here?
I do think Jen has a point, so...
She does have a point.
Yep.
I, I, yes, I definitely didn't...
Let's keep it status quo for now, and then if we decide at the first meeting, we don't need the, the second one of the month, we'll determine that at the first meeting.
Okay.
That's a good approach. Good approach. Great. Excellent. Classroom changes. I'll defer to Mr. Lampron and Ms. Kewell.
So, we're going to hand out an updated physical layout of the school. Just kind of talk about some of the changes that will be taking place next year.
Do you have a background for that?
No.
So, the biggest move that you'll see of the, the modulars, which currently has three special education case managers and our Little Paws program. Those special ed case managers are now inside the school. If you look, if you look where the gym's located, just beneath, beneath the gym, there's going to be one closet and five workstations that will be all about seven by ten, floor to ceiling, wall, door. So, that will, that will free up half of the modular, and the Little Paws will be moving into a current third grade classroom, which is, is a bit undersized, but it has a bathroom, it has a sink, so it fits some really nicely. And what this does is puts our two, our two fourth grades together in the modular, and because fourth grade was already displaced, meaning they weren't all together to be able to collaborate easily with a, with a quick open of the door, so that the fourth grade group that was displaced, it keeps them displaced, but puts everyone else together. So, third grade is together, second grade's together, first grade's together, kindergarten's together, and fifth grade, which has been on an island, the three fifth grades will now be together. So, in fifth grade this year, we'll have, we'll have one veteran teacher, a new hire, and then a new teacher to fifth grade as well, so we don't want any of those teachers to be on an island. We want them to be supported.
Can you say that again?
So, we have one, we have one veteran fifth grade teacher that will be back in fifth grade. We have one open position, because we're going to have three fifth grades next year, and then we have one, we only have two fifth grades this year, so there'll be a third fifth grade next year due to student enrollment, and we're going to shift the teacher from their current grade to fifth grade, one with experience teaching in fifth grade in another district. Come on.
Ralph?
We have enough kindergartners for three classes?
Better.
People got to stop braiding.
Hey, one of my kids is one of them. You watch it, buddy.
Ralph, at the, at the last school board meeting, I think, I think I reported that we had forty-seven.
Yeah.
And I've been, past history is typically, I've been told about ten over the summer, so...
Really?
Fifty-seven puts us just under twenty a class, which seems about right. And I think the minimum requirement K to two is twenty-five, so we're beneath that.
Maximum requirement.
Max, yeah, sorry. So, some of the other shifts that, smaller, smaller, unless you're that person, it's not a small move to you, but Title One, which was right next to the sixth grade classroom in between seventh grade LA and the guidance council.
Bless you.
Bless you. They'll be moving to a, a current, right, right above the art room, which is currently OT and a case manager, so that, the OT is going to go into the former Title One room. Title One's going in, what, the case manager that was in, in that room is now in one of the new workspaces, and this gives Title One much more workspace, and it gives them to keep their, to keep their...
Materials.
Materials and libraries. Another big, big change is across from the main office, so that was the technology room. It's a little bigger than a normal classroom, a little too big almost, so we've, we're going to divide that space into half, and the bigger half will be the part that houses our partner program.
Are you dividing it with a wall?
A wall, with a door.
A wall.
And then that other, the other half, which isn't half, but forty to thirty-five percent of what's currently there will be our student support center.
So, you're, you're adding a door to, to the hallway?
In between rooms.
You're going to use it?
Between the two.
Okay, between the two.
So, a door, and then within the wall.
I get it.
I mean, a wall.
There's two doors in that classroom, as it is now.
That was like a really good use of space.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
I love Title One, I love that the Title One gets a bigger room, that means they can service students in their room, they don't have to be in the hallway, which I think is, is super.
What does Title One do exactly?
Reading.
Okay.
So, again, they have two people in there.
In math, is it?
In math, sorry, thank you. But they have, they don't have to do it again in the hallway, and it's a much larger room than the closet they have.
Um, trend, are there any other changes that I'm not thinking of? So, I guess, moving forward, so a big, another big change is that we have forty-two third grade students.
I saw that.
So, that moves us from three third grade classes to two, and it puts twenty-one in twenty-one, but it puts them in classrooms with two veteran teachers, and it puts them in two nice sized rooms. And then moving forward, if that trend continues, so kids, the same amount of students leave that come in are about equal, we would then have two fourth grades, so then fourth grades are now together. Third, the third grades will go into the Little Paws room, and Little Paws would go into the fourth grade room, and then all our grade levels are together. So, for the next two years, this seems like a, on paper, at this moment, seems like a good plan.
And if the students in that third grade class are all getting along at twenty-one students per class size...
Yeah.
It's not unreasonable to expect them to, or believe that they can get along for the following years, right? I mean, as, like, I think you were just saying, then we'll have two fourth grades the following year, two fifth grades. It's, it's possible to do it that way, right?
Right. But it's possible we get, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Part, if there are move-ins, then we'll have to kind of reassess where we're at, or if there are move-outs.
But if the numbers stay the same, and the kids, the population are basically the same personalities getting along with each other, once they learn to get along at that age, they should be able to get along.
Exactly, my, exactly what I was going to say, Ralph, you know, typically, conventionally, we end up, are able to reduce the number of classes as the students get older. That doesn't, that's not always the case, just because of, you know, chemistry and dynamics in the, in the classroom, but that's what we would hope and expect.
Excellent. You all set, Jim?
Yeah, I had some, I had something else that I'll say.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
All right, thank you. That's really good, actually.
It is, it's really good.
I got something for other.
Other business, Jerry?
Yeah, I think Jim just found it.
He found it?
No, I didn't find it, but I'll wait for my, my turn under other.
So, it's really, I wanted, I want to say, that was a great workshop we had, and it made me rethink what we had in non-public for tonight under one of the articles, and, you know, in discussion about something we, we have to discuss, something has to do with negotiations, and the recommendation of our attorney, he said, "Put an E L, we'll cover everything in there," but after listening to New Hampshire School Board Association, we've got non-public covered anyway, but it really won't fall under E, consideration for negotiation of pending claims, as Will and Barry had said, that really has to be something that's in writing, and that is a pending litigation. We do not, something could come up as litigation after we get done our discussion in non-public, but it isn't currently, so it doesn't need to be qualified. So, one of the other pieces that was, that we're bringing up, I was going to bring up in there after our discussion here in non-public, I decided to bring it up in public, and basically it is the use of the unaffiliated salary in contingency. And just an FYI that will be, you know, we have broken down the contingency money. I got, I got an excellent one for you.
Just checking.
That this, the salary contingency was, is used, you know, has been used, was used last year, and this year, we're expecting to, you know, balance out the salaries, custodial, bus drive, support staff, and administrative positions, and this will be reflected in the FY twenty contracts, and those increases range from one to three point four percent.
So, this isn't anything that needs to be voted on, or?
No, you've already voted, you voted on the money, you...
But we don't need to vote on the, on how it's dispersed?
No, I think that's not our level.
Okay, so this doesn't fall under this year's budget freeze?
No, it's, it's for the FY twenty.
Okay.
And as we are preparing, the contracts are unaffiliated.
Yeah.
I want to inform you, you'll, you'll see that...
I guess the same question.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
It was budgeted?
Yeah.
And you're using the money budgeted appropriately?
Correct.
And I've just, so my thought process is, twelve months from today, are we going to be seeking deficit spending appropriations and stuff like that? If, if this is part of the collective bargaining agreement, that's one thing, I understand that, you know, and again, beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, that budget was all voted on in March. I just want to make sure that, that we're not, you know, Merry Christmas.
No, they, they, these were based on, the unaffiliated are not covered under the CBA, Mr. Fogg, so these are not based on CBA, these are based on what, when they were hired, basically, and when, did they get a raise already, and things of that nature.
So, they don't have a, they don't have a contract through collective bargaining?
Correct, sir.
They have con, and...
A memorandum of understanding.
And, and these additional pays, additional, whether it's a stipend, what do you call it, in their contracts? It'll be reflected in the contracts for fiscal year 2020. What is it going to be called, so when we're seeing those contracts, we'll recognize it?
Well, you won't see them, because they're memorandums of understanding. What you see are the contractors, administrators...
Yeah.
For approval, and teachers for approval.
And parents.
Not parents, no, not parents.
Tracy?
So, these are all unaffiliated, so therefore, there is no schedule for increase. When was the last time they had an increase, some of them?
That I can't speak to.
Maureen, do you want to know?
I wasn't here, but the people who have been here over two years, in last, they did not get an increase last year. Not, the people that have been here for two years have not seen an increase.
I think the timing is terrible. I think that we are looking at a deficit budget, I think that we're on a spending freeze for other things. I know that it's talking for this year, but does this have to happen now?
No, it's not for this year.
I understand, it's going into twenty, nineteen, twenty, it's the coming year. It just bothers me that we're on a spending freeze, the teachers' contracts were not passed, so they didn't get what we, you know, raises. I'm just going on record that it bothers me that we're giving out any raises at all at the moment with the current situation.
Ralph? I'd like to just make sure that I understand well, the teachers' contracts will allow them raises as the contracts are currently.
Just step, that's not the same thing as a raise.
Actually, I don't think they can step, you know.
The contracts they're in now, right, have built into them some, some...
She's shaking her head, no.
No.
The contract that they're currently in ends June thirtieth, and since it ends June thirtieth, and nothing was approved...
Right.
At July first, everything stays status quo.
It's a default contract, right?
No, it's not a default contract, it's, everything stays status quo. The, the community has to approve the contract in the, in whatever negotiation that was put forth on the ballot, and it failed. Therefore, no teacher will get a, a step increase, longevity increase. The only thing that is allowed in, in contractual agreement based on the RSA are track changes. So, if somebody moves from a BA to BA fifteen, that's the only thing they will have, and that was put in the budget, because legally, the school district had to abide by it.
Okay.
So, it's in, it's in next year's, it's in the FY twenty budget, track changes only for teachers, that was required.
Okay.
For non-support staff, for non-affiliated staff, they'll, it's budgeted around fifteen thousand dollars to be distributed amongst non-union staff, which included administrators and support staff. And that's the money that's, is being distributed at this point, is being, is being indicated, is going to be distributed. Both, both things were budgeted for next year.
Okay. So, I think you might have answered one of my questions from back in March, is how did the default budget grow when there was an appropriation, the, the previous cycle of numbered different, the track changes were probably what commanded that increase in the numbers of the, what was being described as a default budget? Is that right?
We'll have to, you and I can have the discussion. When we presented, when the superintendent presented the default budget, it actually showed where the areas were...
Okay.
That were not being brought forward, that were not legally blinded by it. And one of the things, because we're not legally blinded by it, was the non-affiliated salaries were not put into the default, because if the default passes, it, that's not legally binding. Only the CBAs are legally binding.
And the track changes are the catalyst for the increase?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right.
We ready for non-public?
No, but I just, I have one other, if you don't mind. I just wanted to hand out, Jen and I put together a list of upcoming events, just so, it's that time of year, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things are happening, but just a...
Excellent.
Nothing really to speak to, but just more of an FYI, I know people come to you with questions, so I want you to be in the loop and informed.
Are we at the graduation again? If we were last year?
That was a nice thing to do last year, wasn't it?
Eighth grade?
Yeah, we went to the eighth grade graduation, and we went to the preschool graduation.
I would hope you would.
You could have to wait for our invitation.
Yeah.
Your invitation's extended. I will be receiving, I received the email, Teddy, invitations, the Spalding graduation is upcoming, and I expect those in the mail back to us sometime early this week or next week, late, late this week, early next week, excuse me.
Well, when is the eighth grade going, the, the students that had or are going to have the experience of going to DC because of their accomplishments or academic accomplishments, when does that trip start going?
It's not on yet, but it's, it's middle of June.
Okay.
So, Carlene could tell us?
Oh, boy.
It's Sunday to Thursday, this coming Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
Yeah.
All right, so I had offered my stipend, and I spoke, not even thinking about that stipend is not available until, well, it shouldn't be available to me till after six months of service, you know, and then the twelve month. And I, I thought that I would be able to come up with a thousand dollars because of that stipend for the class travel. And I, I thought that I would be able to come up with a thousand dollars because of that stipend for the class trip, and I can't, I can't, you know, I might be able to find a thousand dollars prior to the trip, and then just, you know, get my stipend and reimburse myself. But before that, I, I'm embarrassed about my jumping off the end of the dock without even seeing where the ducks were floating around.
It's an analogy.
So I'm embarrassed, and I'm short-sighted. And I hope that fundraising things are going well, I don't know how they're at, where they're at now.
Yeah, we, we raised about, I don't know what Cindy was coming, but I think we're around 3,000, I think, out of 7,500, so.
Tracy, would you like to speak to how much Cindy's place, um?
It, we, it, it was a lot of fun. RSAU came, Sandy was there with her husband, I was the waitress of the most, I mean.
If you knew that, we all would've come.
It was spaghetti or meatballs, and, and I think Cindy donated the food, and the girls were there, they did their raffles, and it really was wonderful to, Mr. Soul came, it was really wonderful. It was steady all night long, I, I don't even know how many dinners we served, but I think we raised between 12 and 1,300 dollars that night.
Wow, wow.
It was really, it was, it was, yep, it was very nice, Cindy.
So that's separate from what she just said?
Yes, but no, no, I think that's included.
It's included.
It's included, so.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you send the, the board members the, what, how do we, about a donation check for, who to do that to?
Okay, so I could do it now in public, in case the public would like to also donate money.
Sure.
Just to, to write a check out to Paul's school, and then where it says the purpose, it's for the donation of this trip, which is called the, what is it called?
NHD.
NHD. So that it can only be used for that purpose. And it goes to, it goes through the student activity account, so it doesn't get commingled with the.
And who, we mail it into the SAU?
No, you could, no, directly to, yes, you can do it to the SAU.
Well, that's why I asked.
Yes, yes, it goes to the SAU, 'cause we deposited the money, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just one other thing I'd like to add, this is not the trip that everybody goes on a field trip to Washington DC. These kids earned it. They went to Plymouth, they were first voted at their school for their competition, they, the ones that won went to Plymouth. At Plymouth, they competed within the state, and five Wakefield kids earned the right to compete in Washington DC and represent our town. And unfortunately, with five kids and 1,500 dollars a person, and that was 7,500 dollars, they raised three, I think, I can't do the math in my head, but we're still around 900 dollars per, I meant per student. It's around still 900 dollars per student, still, which is still a lot of money for having earned the right to get there. They're not just going, which is, also, field trips are great, but they are going to represent Wakefield, and they were great the other night.
Carlene, I have a question for you. So if people send a check in, is that gonna be too late to?
No, because we're actually probably gonna bring back receipts and then disperse the money, I think, that way, from receipts. So it'll be after the fact.
Yes. Unless, yes, unless they, unless people have receipts now to pay ahead of time.
You all set with that? Tracy, good answer.
I was just gonna say, Krista went, Sharon went, you went, their kids went, it was really nice.
I just wanted to speak to the actual Washington DC trip with the whole eighth grade, it went really, really well. The kids were very well behaved everywhere we went, we were the best behaved group. We got comments from other staff members, from people at museums, about how well behaved and respectful the students were, and we didn't see that from everywhere, and it was nice to have our kids represent everybody so well, and they learned a lot. You know, we had them do scavenger hunts, so they had to actually pay attention as they went around to museums and get information. The weather was beautiful, you know, it was just, it was a really, really great trip.
Excellent.
Yay.
All right, moving on, we need a motion?
No.
No?
Resignation nominee. You said you were gonna do that, you said you were.
I did say that, sorry. Let's do public comment. Beth?
Hi, I have two questions.
Yes.
Neither is to cause problems, wreck with others, it's just, I wanna be educated. The first question is, I know that we've spoken about that there was a special education teacher that was for a while removed from her students to help out in another classroom. I just wanna find out, was she ever able to get back to her own students? The other question I have, if the school ends up in a deficit budget, how do you go about getting the money? Do you go before the town budget committee? Do the, is there, has to be a vote to raise the money? How does that all work? Those are my two questions, and thank you.
Say it again?
I want you to write for an answer.
Hope Jerry will, SOU office will give you an answer on that one.
Okay, thank you.
On both of those. Anybody else? Steve? No. Ralph?
Can I add one thing to future agendas, towards the end of our agenda? And that would be just setting the next meeting date. If we put that on our agenda and towards the end of our meeting, we declare when we're going to meet again, I think that would help a lot of people that watch it. So I mean.
Sure. That's fine. I'll be okay with that, yeah?
Is it safe to say?
No, I think we, I think you had that before.
I, I think we did too, I guess, I was just flipping the page when it's not on there, I thought we still had that on there.
So that next meeting date would be January 18th?
June.
June 18th.
That's what I said. We can add on the meeting, when I was skipping somewhere, I said the whole fall. And so we have, and we have the correspondence that I gave you regarding the 91A that was addressed to you as a school board. So you don't have to, you need not do anything with that, just letting you know, reminding you, you have that correspondence.
Okay. What else?
That's all I have, sir. Non-public.
And they wanna make a motion to go into non-public?
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
I'm doing.
Non-public RSA, 91A 3 to A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any employee or the disciplining of such an employee, or the investigation of charges against him or her unless the employee affected has A, a right to a meeting, two, request that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted.
No E. No E.
No E. So we're done.
No, down to L.
Oh, down to L. All right, L, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present.
Yep, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, roll call.
McCollie, A.
Glad A.
Call, A. Johnson, A.
Fogg, A.
Are we staying here?
Good.
All right. Jerry, as the chair, I'd like to present you with the contract for the, for next year.
Right, thank you.
And you can give Jim and Jen their contracts.
Are they starting here?
I have no idea. Dave and I were.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm excited to be here.
That was a vote of four to one on the contract. And the dissent was based on budgetary items.
Well, I gotta tell you, my next kid is starting.
I'm not taking it personal.
My next kid is starting, I have two kids in the school this year, I'm thrilled here at the top.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I am too.
Congratulations.
It has been a pleasure to, to work with you over this crazy stretch.
We need the kids, like.
I think one of my kids.
Is there?
I, that's what I just meant to say, guys, I think we have more to do, we have to give our votes in public, so it's all, so we're, which we just did.
For one.
For one.
For one.
Bob also congratulated, I'll let Jerry know that his other administrators have contracts.
Jen, Kuhl.
Kuhl.
And Jim Lampron, also the board approved, five and O, five and O.
Excellent.
No dissenting vote on.
Should I take that personally?
He tried, actually.
Motion to adjourn.
You also wanted to acknowledge your vote.
Second in.
You also want to acknowledge your vote on the, my discussion with you about negotiations.
Yes, we do.
Oh, yes, and.
The board decided to encourage the superintendent to go in a direction that, that he's being advised to go with, through our district attorney, uh, school district attorney.
And we also have to accept Nicole's resignation in public with regret.
When? I recently, I.
When we find a replacement, a suitable replacement for her.
Thank you.
With, with very much regret, but both votes were five and O, both the last two, votes were five and O.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?